And welcome to the August Board of Education meeting. Joy, would you like to call the roll?
Mr. Wickliffe, Mr. Shear, Mr. Beveridge, Mr. McKeon, Mrs. Velter, Mr. Geary.
Here.
All right. If you rise with me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we have both of office swearing in for Board Member Kristen Schultz.
And we're going to therefore, with said Kansas constituents, with Miss Kristen Schultz raised your right hand and after hearing the other office, respond by saying, "I do." Do you solemnly swear that you uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of a member of the Board of Education Unified School District 233 so help me God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, and now we'll do awards.
We have one very special recognition tonight. Tonight, we're going to recognize the success of the Olathe Advanced Technical Center Skills USA students. I'd like to ask Amy Stole, Administrator of OATC, to come forward to assist with this recognition. Nearly forty-three students from the OATC competed against students from across the state of Kansas in the Skills USA events. The following eleven students placed first and earned the right to compete in the Skills USA National Conference that took place in late June in Louisville, Kentucky. So please come forward as I call your name, and not everyone is here tonight, but we're going to say everyone's name just to make sure they're recognized. In the individual state championship category, job skill demonstration open, Brian Ibera Ortiz from Olathe South. In the job skill demonstration A, Tristan Gibbons from Olathe East. In the team category, the community service team, Adidra Colors from Olathe North, Jackson Harris from Olathe South, and TJ Concade from Olathe Northwest. In the chapter display team, Hazekiah Newman from Olathe East, Luke Robinson from Olathe South, Damian Tolbert from Olathe South. And in the teamwork team, Dakota Brawers from Olathe South, Will Egan from Olathe East, Gage Kellogg from Olathe West, Troy Johnson from KSD. Congratulations to all of you and awesome success. Raise your hand if you're seniors. Good luck to all of you. Congratulations. And did all the parents get, did you get the pictures you needed? We want to make sure. Good. Congratulations to all of our parents. And that concludes our recognitions tonight.
All right, and now we'll go into public comments.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the Board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire Board. If a response is appropriate, the President will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audio recorded for a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the Board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and your address, and I believe we have at least three here tonight that would like to address the Board.
Yep, it's four, and first up is Mike Jensen.
Thank you for your time. My name is Mike Jensen, 1257 East Butterfield Place, Olathe, and I'm a business owner. I own two businesses here in Olathe. I've lived here longer than I want to admit, over forty years, and love Olathe, and I love our schools. What I want to talk about this evening is something that I feel is very, very hazardous. Right next to ODAC, Tyson has ninety-five thousand pounds of anhydrous ammonia. And anhydrous ammonia will kill, blind you, or leave you with permanent lung damage if it gets away. I'm a businessman, I'm pro-business, but I want, I'm pro-kids and pro-families and pro-people ahead of business. I hope Tyson makes all the profit they can possibly make safely and not at the expense of safety. I want to talk about anhydrous ammonia a little bit. It's labeled, and I quote, "an extremely hazardous material," unquote, by the EPA, by OSHA, and the Chemical Safety Board. It's toxic in concentrations of fifty to three hundred parts per million. It will kill you. It's one-hundred percent pure ammonia. It burns you, it's attracted to water. All of us are seventy percent water, so if it gets away, and from the time it's, from the time it's captured, it's trying to get away. It's stored under intense pressure, and it's very corrosive. It actually eats steel, and it's the highest expanding gas that there is. So if you take one cubic foot of liquid anhydrous ammonia, it turns into eight-hundred-and-fifty square foot of deadly gas, ammonia gas when it's released. And it's attracted to water, so if it does get away, it stays on the ground. I gave you a packet this evening, there's a video in there, and I've sent it to several of you by email. If anhydrous does get away, it stays on the ground, it moves with the wind, and it creates a deadly plume. Where this anhydrous is, unfortunately, is seven-hundred foot from where our kids play their Friday night, and their families play their Friday night games at ODAC. If this were an agricultural area, Kansas state law would not have allowed them to put anhydrous there. They wouldn't, if there was a church with twenty people within a thousand foot of Tyson, they would have not allowed them to come in and put it there under Kansas state law. Unfortunately, our laws are very lacking in regulating industry that uses it. I've got some really good news this evening, though. There's an alternative. I'm a businessman, and if I can make more money, twenty percent more money, and be safe, I would do that all day long, just for the return on investment. So Tyson has a great, a great chance to switch over to what's called a CO2 cascade system, and they could reduce that ninety-five thousand pounds of anhydrous down to under ten thousand pounds, and they would pick up twenty percent of operating efficiency of their system, and the ROI, according to all the experts, is, is, is about five years. They could recoup their investment in five years. We've contacted them over and over, we've had no success, we haven't heard back from them. We sent them a letter, we sent it to the CEO, and, and the only response we got is they started tracking our attorney on social media. So I want to talk about it being explosive also. It's in concentrations of fifteen to twenty-eight percent, it's explosive. You can go online and just Google "anhydrous ammonia explosion." So anytime there's a leak, there's always a concentration between fifteen and twenty-eight percent that's explosive, and it's not unusual to hear about the side of a building being blown out when there's a leak, and then there's a spark from machinery. So it attracts to water, it'll blind you, it will kill you. It's corrosive, it's trying to get out from the minute, the minute it's bottled up. And there's been over one thousand reported accidents the last ten years, six-hundred-and-seventy-eight facilities, one-hundred-and-thirty-three have had multiple accidents, nineteen deaths, sixteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-one injuries, and over sixty-three-thousand-seven-hundred people have had to be evacuated. West Texas, a small town, was flattened, nearly flattened, by an ammonium nitrate and anhydrous ammonia explosion. They had a school that was right within a thousand feet of the plant, and luckily, the explosion happened on a Sunday night when no one was at school. Blew the windows out, blew walls down, it would have been a tragic event.
Mr. Jensen, you have thirty seconds left.
How long?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, wow. All right. Tyson, seven hundred feet from the fields at ODAC. We, we, I'm pro-business, we want him to stay here, but we want him to stay here safe. According to the risk management plan that they filed with the EPA, I've got it right here from when I went in and hand-wrote it, their worst-case scenario is forty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-eleven people impacted in a one, in a three-point-three-mile radius, and that's a ten-minute leak at a one-point-five mile-an-hour wind. This is a real hazard. My question is, and along with a lot of refrigerant experts, and I put some of them in your file, who's planning this? Who's planning this? Who says this is okay? To put ninety-five thousand pounds of toxin right next to where our kids play ball. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next up is Mary Brock Latham.
Good evening, I'm Mary Brock Latham. My address is 25910 West 149th Street, Olathe, Kansas. I am the proud grandmother of a rising junior at Olathe Northwest, who was a member of the golf team there that went to state. So I, he has a lot of friends that attend other Olathe sporting events. I also, I've been here before, because for ten years, I retired in 2014, I was the Executive Director of Science Pioneers, and I had a lot of good relationships with your Olathe science teachers and worked extensively with both Carol Williamson and Julie Miller, and those are outstanding, outstanding individuals and representatives. I've been here to recognize winners of the Greater Kansas City Science and Engineering Fair, and those kids here, you have some of the best science students in the whole state of Kansas. You should be very proud. When we talk about the risks that Tyson poses to us, we're very, very serious and want to be on record here, so you all are well aware of every day what could happen. It's not only the sporting events, you have at least one school, I measured these about six months ago, at least one school within that three-point-three-mile radius. So if it happened during a work week, they would be also deeply at risk under these conditions. Sheltering at place doesn't really help with HVAC systems, you can't shut them down fast enough. These risks are real. We want what we want from you is your aid and your help in advocating that Tyson seriously consider that CO2 cascade system, because it will save them money, and it will, in fact, make it possible for our kids to be safe. I know you care for them, your parents yourselves, and it's just something we cannot ignore. We cannot play ostrich with our kids' lives or our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, Alan Latham. Okay. Daniel Helwig?
Yeah, my name is Daniel Helwig, 1016 South Valley Road, Olathe, Kansas, 66061. Proud alumni of Olathe East, class of 2003. So when I went to school, we didn't know when we would go to a football game that there was ninety-six thousand tons of dangerous chemical next to where we would enjoy an outing. And the fact that this has gone on as long as it has with nobody knowing about it or drawing attention to it is really egregious. The fact that the city council didn't do anything when creating incentives to put Tyson in there is really egregious. And the fact that the Olathe School Board has done nothing to work in partnership to counteract that is really scary. So we're pleading with you today as concerned citizens for responsible government that you guys will hear our cry and you will take action and join with us in a partnership to hold Tyson accountable. We sent Shannon Wickliffe about a month ago a letter, a certified letter, notifying him of our intent to come before you and talk about this issue. I don't know if that was shared with you. And we sent that letter to Robert Dillon as well, and the letter simply states, "Mr. Dillon, I wanted to follow up in writing confirming our conversation about the ninety-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-fourteen pounds of anhydrous ammonia used to refrigerate the Tyson warehouse that you manage on 159th Street in Olathe. We restate that as a grossly irresponsible location to place any large amounts of potentially deadly and explosive toxin next to our Olathe School District Activities Center is egregious enough, but there are numerous other public gathering places, including a large church, large medical complex, hospital, and hospice house less than a mile down the road. All these facilities predated Tyson Warehouse." Sorry, I was on the Olathe East debate team, so I'm running the spread right now. "We repeat our phone request to you to meet with CC4RG and other community leaders to discuss changing over to a CO2 cascade system that would potentially remove ninety percent of the ammonia while increasing efficiently by twenty to twenty-five percent. According to industry articles and research, Tyson would also see an ROI on regulatory compliance and insurance by getting under the EPA's ten-thousand-pound reporting threshold. Karna and M&amp;M, among others, offer this technology to provide contact information for your superior if you remain unwilling to meet with us. If you stated on your phone conversation that you would pass our contact info on but would not provide your superior's phone number or name, is that still your position? In making your decision to act on our request, please consider: The worst-case scenario for Tyson located, filed with the EPA, is a three-point-five-mile evacuation area of forty-five-thousand-three-hundred-eleven souls, not including thousands that could be at the ODAC watching a high school game or a small number of athletic events that occur four to five times per week per year. Tyson, per all the ammonia injuries, deaths, and other safety and pollution issues well documented in the media, courts, OSHA, and EPA records, does not have a good reputation with the public on safety or pollution control. Tyson's own shareholders have instructed management to clean up the company's act in regard to pollution and safety. We concur. We have attached the proxy resolution. We are asking that you voluntarily switch over to a safer cascade hybrid CO2 system to eliminate a very real risk. If you do so, we will be the first ones to praise you and acknowledge your civic responsibility. If Tyson is unwilling to remove the hazard, we will begin to sustain a very vocal and very public campaign until the ammonia is removed. We have already notified the school board and hospital. Robert, we know that you have relationships with the hospital and school boards, as well as the Olathe Chamber. We are also educating these organizations as to the NH3 hazard, your warehouse holds to our community. Please use your position to be proactive in your leadership. Over three thousand citizens rallied to defeat the, over three thousand citizens rallied to defeat the Lineage Logistics Cold Storage Project with a loud and sustained public outcry due to the proximity of the homes of the sheriff's office and the adult detention center. Your ammonia is far more dangerous in this location. There is genuine concern about the hazard to our community. Even more citizens rallied in Tonga Noxy and gave Tyson and elected officials a resounding "No." We know a transition to CO2 can't take place overnight, but it must take place. Let's start the conversation. We want to draw your attention to the accidental release of two-ton tank of anhydrous ammonia forty, forty miles south of Chicago in a suburb called Beach Park in March of 2019. This relatively small leak, by comparison to the amount of anhydrous ammonia stored in your Olathe facility, was caused by a small leak. Residents in the surrounding one-mile radius were forced to stay inside their homes for twenty-four hours while emergency responders ran to mitigate the damage of the incident.
Mr. Helwig, you have thirty seconds.
Thirty-seven people in the one-mile radius of the spill had to be hospitalized. Two sheriff's deputies and a firefighter also needed to be hospitalized. You can read about the link, we included links. DuPont New Century met with us, CC4RG, on Monday, March 18th, to announce they were switching over to a hybrid cooling system, reduced their ammonia use from twelve thousand pounds down to twelve hundred pounds. We're calling on Tyson to do the same thing. Anybody who is unaware of this, we have a packet of information that we would love to give you, including a thumb drive which contains video of what one of these damaging anhydrous ammonia leaks looked like. This is a serious matter, and we're not going to go away. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Alan Latham, I live at 25910 West 149th Street in Olathe. Well, we've heard a lot here tonight, and I'm not going to dwell on the danger, but I want to talk about what some people are going to tell you. They're going to talk about the risk. They're going to say, "Well, there's really no risk in this." Well, I'm going to share some experience with you. I worked for a number of years with an engineering and construction firm. We built refineries and petrochemical plants all over the world. And one time, I had a little short-term assignment for, at a Georgia Pacific plant that produced chlorine. And when you went on the site, they gave you a gas mask. And the reason they did that was, eh, about three, four times a month, there'd be a power interruption. And when it did, compressors went down, chlorine escaped, and the alarms went off. And so you put your gas mask off, and you ran off to the fence, the property. Eh, being a home, guy out of the home office, this was a little disturbing to me, and, but for people out on the job site, well, it's another day at the office. But when I said something to the plant manager there at Georgia Pacific, and he said, oh, he says, "It's just routine, no big deal," you know, and I said, "Well, what happened if the power went out?" For a long period of time, he goes, "Well, that would be pretty serious, but we're way out in the middle of, well, which they were, they were way out in the country." And I said, "Yeah, still," you know, and he says, "Well, he says, hey, look, do you carry around four spare tires in your car?" And I said, "Well, no." He said, "Well, you know, you could have four flats at one time." Well, kind of, okay, makes sense, I suppose, but a few years ago, there was an earthquake seventy miles off the coast of Japan. And the Japanese had a nuclear power plant that was a hundred yards from the ocean. They had built it to all the specifications that they could do. It withstood the earthquake. What they didn't realize, about thirty minutes later, they had seven, seven tsunami waves come in, forty-five feet high. Just washed all over that nuclear power plant, and power went out. And I think you all read the news, you know, they're still trying to clean that up now, and it's going to be decades before they can clean it up. They just never anticipated it, four flat tires. The other thing I want to talk about, then, is corporate responsibility. And this is what I've alluded to a little bit here is, is there's a fix for this. You can argue the risk all you want to, but there's a, there's a fix for this, and it's not that. DuPont stood up and said, "Hey, we're upgrading our plants, we're going to do this here, and we want you guys to be aware of this before we even start construction, what we're going to do." That's corporate citizenship. That's what we're asking for Tyson here, guys. Take the risk away. Don't worry about four flat tires. Take the risk away and be a good corporate citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comments? If not, we'll move on to 4.01, preliminary budget presentation.
It's my pleasure to begin our conversation regarding the 2019-20, it seems so strange to be saying, 19-20 annual budget. The whole purpose of tonight's discussion is really to lead towards an agenda item that you have later in your agenda, and that is to approve a notice of hearing. We'll hold a hearing on August 22nd, at least that's the proposed date. This notice has to be published in newspaper ten days prior to that meeting, and maps out the levies and high-level budget summary for the public. Some of the key assumptions that went into this year's budget is, we're assuming that over the next year, our growth will be one-hundred-and-thirty-seven students. Those numbers have come down significantly from when I first arrived here back in 2007, but we still continue to grow. The second bullet is that our funding, our FTE increase for 2019 was one-hundred-and-nine. Why that's significant is, under our new funding formula, our funding is based on the prior year growth, so it's a known factor as we head into the budget. And previously, we used to have to estimate, use that estimated number, and sometimes we'd hit it and sometimes we wouldn't. So this is absolutely known that we grew one-hundred-and-nine in funding FTE. We also have growth contingencies built into this. We used to buffer for a, just our overall growth, but now we do it at the waiting level, because that's where there, there could be some change, and we could receive additional funding, so we want to, we want to prepare for that event. For example, if we had more at-risk students, we want to make sure we have the ability to accept that additional funding. So we add ten percent to each one of these waitings. So if there were, if there were ten FTE of at-risk students, we would make it eleven as we budget. At the same time, we increase the expenditure as well so that it, it stays neutral within the budget, but at least we, we would have the spending authority in order to accept that additional aid. We had a, we've built the budget around five-point-four percent assessed valuation growth. We, we have had higher growth in the past, still a nice number, five-point-four, but it is slowing down a bit, going, going through its cycle. That's pretty evenly split between residential and commercial. Sometimes we've seen one or the other larger. We are seeing a little bit more come off the preliminary number. What do I mean by that? Some of the IRBs, TIFs, abatements lower our number on the first statement. In January, we would have estimated closer to six percent, but as, as the assessor's office works through all of those, our final number was five-point-four percent growth. Of course, the most significant news that we've been waiting for, for a very long time is that the, that our court case has been settled, and, and the first component of that, that settlement is that our base aid per pupil is at forty-four thirty-six. That's now thirty-six dollars higher than that low, that highest mark that I always mentioned back in '09. That's unadjusted for inflation, though. So we've seen an old funding formula that started at thirty-six-hundred and got to a high of forty-four-hundred, and then we saw years where we had recisions, and we've slowly grown out of that, and now we're at forty-four thirty-six. If you adjust that forty-four thirty-six for inflation, had we kept pace since 2008, we've had about seventeen percent inflation. CPI index actually went up seventeen-point-one percent. So we really would have funding at fifty-one fifty-one. That difference is about seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars, or twenty-four million dollars, had the 2008 inflation factor been built, built in. That's why it's really significant that our new funding formula has a CPI adjustment, so we can keep pace with inflation. I'm not looking to gift horse in the mouth. It's wonderful that we have that additional funding. I just wanted to highlight why I'm just as excited about the CPI index being built into the formula going forward. Some of the other budget considerations, as we built the budget, we really attempted to maximize our state aid by utilizing, it will be in capital outlay to its fullest. Bond and interest levy, we've, we're below the seventeen-and-a-half mils we promised way back when we did our bond issues, and we're, we're still trying to keep that as low as possible, but also plan for the future. We really have no additional ability to transfer more salaries into capital outlay. We, we have, we utilized that tool the last several years, so we, we put custodial maintenance ground-type salaries into our capital outlay fund. We would love one day to start pulling those out of there, but we, we can't shift more in. We also have opened a couple of schools in the last few years, if you haven't noticed, Olathe West High School, Summit Trail Middle School, this year Canyon Creek. We also did Mill Creek Campus. So that's putting a strain on the desire to use extraordinary growth facilities levy, or what we affectionately know as BODA. So we'll have a little discussion about that as well. And our, I've indicated this the last couple of years, with that slowing growth, we'll have also a slowing need for additional buildings, which is going to cause a decline in that particular levy over the next six to seven years. There's a lot of numbers here, but bear with me. The, from fourteen fifteen through sixteen seventeen, we had the same extraordinary growth facilities levy, or BODA levy, it was about nine-and-a-half million dollars. It was locked up at that level, because if you remember, we were under block grants. So actually, that was one benefit of our block grant. We were frozen at a higher number than truly our schedule said we would be levied. We were at nine-and-a-half, then a couple of buildings came off of the schedule, we would have been at seven-three, we would have been at five-five, but we were held up at that nine-and-a-half. Then we opened Olathe West, and we moved the BODA, we utilized fourteen-and-a-half million dollars of our authority. Ten of it, ten-point-seven of it was for Olathe West. Then we opened Summit, and we went to $20 million. We used 12 million for West, 5.8 for Summit Trail. And just to remind you what this is as far, it's every time you open a new building, if you meet certain criteria considered high-growth, you're allowed to do a local levy and recoup the operating cost at 100% for two years, and then 90, 75, and it decreases by 15% a year. So when I say a building comes off the schedule, it's, it's in its eighth year, and there is, it went from 15% to zero, you no longer receive any funding for that. This budget, we're proposing to keep that at $20 million again. That would be $5.2 million utilization from Summit, 13.2 from West. You see a label that's dark blue for Canyon Creek. I'm recommending in the budget that we not utilize any authority for Canyon Creek because we're just digging a deeper hole that we would have to climb out of in '21, '22 as we'll start to decline by about $3 million a year until that $20 million is, is done, unless we had a significant increase in student growth that warranted additional buildings. So if we had growth that required an elementary school, it might dampen that. It's not like building a high school.
Are we able to go back and claim some of that BODA next year?
You could. This is, this will probably illustrate that the best. In 1718, your full authority was 20 and a half million. We used 14 and a half. This past year, your authority was 24.7, we utilized 20. This year, you're utilizing the same 20 million, but you have 26.7. So there, there's 6.7 you're not utilizing. Next year, there'll still be a gap that, if need be, you could utilize that. After 2021, it will be less than 20 million. It's about 19.2 and starts marching down by that 3 million. The good news is, that's about three and a half mils right now that we're not passing on to the public and are able to balance the budget at that, at that $20 million worth of BODA. Our legal maximum budget last year was $281 million. And based on the state budget worksheets that we work through the formula, our new legal maximum budget would be $294 million. So that's an increase of $13.2 million. Obviously, we have hundreds of lines that go up and down, so I just highlight some of the bigger movement each year. We have fixed costs that, that increase. Transportation budget will increase about $650,000. Our contract calls for a 3.5% increase. We run about a $14 million budget. In addition, we have additional routes, both regular and special ed, for the opening of Canyon Creek. That's what causes that increase. Utilities, we're estimating predominantly electric will increase about $500,000 this year. Tech licenses, we have additional licenses, and obviously, line fees are always on the rise. It's about a $350,000 increase to the tech budget. Our SRO contract has built-in increase, and we also have additional staffing, a sergeant and two additional SRO officers in the contract. And we share that 50/50 with the cost with the city. And as you heard at a couple of meetings ago, our property liability insurance is going up about $130,000. So some of those high-level things that are not plus five, and that one went down five, equate to about $1.7 million worth of increase that would have to come off of that additional funding. But leaves us with about $11.5 million to fund all the other items within our budget. As I said, the small ups and downs and additional in the salary and benefit component of our budget. What's, how's that translate into impact on our levy? As you can see, on the left is our current mill rate. It's a total of 70.665. This would equate to, in 2020, to 70.537, or a slight decrease at this moment of .128. Some of the movement that's, that's going on is the local option budget. I've mentioned before, anything left over in, in that local option budget or supplemental general fund budget has to roll over and decrease the rate the next year. Sometimes that balance is decreasing, it causes an uptick in that levy if you want to try and maximize your authority locally and then the state aid that comes along with that. So because of, we had a lower balance when we ended the year, that's pushing that up a bit. The other factor here is that additional base amount that the new formula is giving us creates a bigger general fund. And because there's a bigger, bigger general fund, when you take 33% times that, you have more authority on the local option budget side. So it's pushing that up a bit. Capital outlay, I've left at the maximum statutory limit of eight mils. Extraordinary growth is decreasing about .68. How does it do that if you stayed at $20 million? $20 million divided basically by more students and more valuation, it just requires a lower rate in order to generate that $20 million. Special liability, very, a small increase. Cost of living, our cost of living levy is a recognition that some counties in Kansas are more expensive to live in than others, and therefore, to attract labor, there is a levy that you can do. And it's driven on home, average home price in our district compared to the average home price in the state. This is saying it's more, our home price went up slightly more than the average did in Kansas. Therefore, you are granted additional authority to raise money to pay staff that can live here. Special assessment, that's benefit district-driven. There aren't, isn't a lot of movement in the benefit districts these days. And that, so that's slowly decreasing as we pay off some of the districts we've been involved in. And at this point, I've left the bond and interest as flat as I could get it in the formula as we look forward to our required payment schedules. So if you had to summarize, what, does the board have anything else they could do? Not really, other than you could take advantage of additional extraordinary growth or BODA. But as I said, I'm not advising that because then we have to figure out how to come up with the funds that are going to start the $3 million a year that we'll, we'll start losing. Otherwise, you've maximized all your authority, not yet. As you vote at the end of August, you would have, if you would go with this particular scenario. If, how patrons will see this on a tax bill is really in four lines. It was quite a surprise. I wasn't sure I was going to make it to work the next day when I opened my tax bill last year because I went straight to a couple of lines and thought I had published the wrong levies, but didn't realize there was a capital outlay line now that has been divided out. It used to be three lines, now it's four lines on a tax bill. So we would see a slight increase in school general. Bond would essentially be flat, capital outlay would be flat. Just how does our, how does that levy stack up historically? Back to 2010, we were at 72.9. You see the spike in 1718, that spike is related to opening of Alatha West. And we've been able to slowly decrease that. I know, obviously, people would love for it to come down faster. But just to put it in perspective, in that same three years, we've opened four new buildings that had put, that put a demand on our, on our budget, but we were able to at least decrease it ever so slightly over that three-year period. So moving forward with the BODA decreasing by 3 million a year, there's going to be a natural decrease in that levy over time. And I would assume over time, not immediately, bond and interest will also start to decrease as we, if we do not have to build as many buildings, we will not have to carry as much bonded indebtedness. So this evening, in your agenda, you will be asking for, to approve the publication of the notice of hearing. We'll publish it next Saturday. It's kind of a long lead to get it into the Alatha News. It'll advertise a public hearing at 5:30 on August 22nd. Also on your agenda, we're asking for a special board meeting that evening in which you would adopt the budget, and then we must file with the county clerk in state of Kansas by August 25th. Just a quick reminder, you're not approving any budgets this evening. We're merely asking that we publish the budget summary, and we've set it at a highest, a high level as we discuss the budget in the coming month. If the desire is to decrease something and have a lower levy, that's possible. We just can't increase the levy or any budget above what is published in the paper. Any questions at this point?
So John, one of the first slides, you had some key assumptions up there. You talked about, talked about the assessed value. So, correct me if I'm wrong, so that's assessed value values of homes and businesses, is that?
Predominantly, yes, yes.
So, a question for you, so this, if I'm getting this term wrong correctly also this, but that black box, all these big retailers, if there's a, if there's a final say of what that looks like, how would that affect all of this?
It would, it would decrease the valuation significantly, which, to raise the same dollars, the mill rate would have to jump up, several mils to generate the same amount of money. Currently, the way that stands is, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Allison, I believe there has been a court ruling, but there are times for appeal. It won't affect us this year. It could next year, but it's retroactive, I believe, for three years. Though, the, the current year plus two prior, so it could be a large adjustment in 2021.
John, is that something that, again, not knowing, we don't have crystal ball to say what's going to happen, but are we, I'm hoping you guys are planning and looking at and putting a scenario together of what, if that is ruled in that way, how would that affect us and what would we be able to do?
We are. The, the impact would be significant to schools. It's also going to be significant to the state because of the, the 20 mils to generate what the Supreme Court has just said is a constitutional level of funding would require a significant increase across the state as well. The, the last notice we had, there, there is an appeal of the initial rulings. We've got some others coming. This will probably end up at a state Supreme Court level. The, the, the tax board, really, there's, there's not a, an appeals process for them other than through the courts and the, their agreement with some of the, the large-box stores, the CVS, the Walgreens, the Walmarts on this theoretical application and how they should be taxed. So we'll, we'll keep an eye on it. I don't think this is something that's going to be settled quickly. We're probably talking a couple of years before we would have any idea. But it's a, it would be a significant impact to school districts as, as well as the community in general. What it will force is a much, much higher shift to residential taxpayers. I've heard estimates as high as, as 30 to 40% increase because of, of that shift. We are going to continue to monitor that.
Is there anything we can do or for all of our parents, the people that don't want to pay additional 30%, that we can do starting now? Or, or if we don't know that, can we start working on that also? Again, to be able to make sure that we understand and get any help and assistance that we can to be able to push this in the right direction.
I, I, it is my understanding, and I think we'll learn more now that we've had the, the actual tax authority ruling, that there could be legislative action that may not, you know, have to work through the courts on, on this particular ruling, but we'd be able to prohibit this moving forward. So I, I do think that there, there will be later this fall some conversation, and we'll monitor some proposed legislation that, that potentially could prohibit the ability to, to assess as is proposed. But, you know, where that goes and, and the conversations that'll follow will keep you, will keep you informed.
Any other questions? John, I was just going to ask a quick question on the levy history. From 10/11 to 11/12, where there was the three-mill drop. Is that, was that a similar BODA construction type of issue or what?
There, there, there were quite a few things that went on in that year. We had a $230 decrease in the base funding per pupil, which lowered our general fund, which lowered your ability for a local option budget, which decreased the levy in the LOB area. We had flat assessed valuation, so anything that lowered a budget had a, had a levy implication. At the same time, we were not building at that time. So that extraordinary growth or BODA, it started, it started decreasing that particular year. We decreased 2.2 mils. We just, there wasn't a revenue source far because buildings were coming off the schedule, no new building coming in behind it. We were also coming out of a high-debt time. We were able to lower the bond and interest rate by about nearly five mils. But to counter that, for a couple of years, we had had a capital outlay levy of about one mil. And we just, we weren't generating enough money to pay the copier leases, much less do repairs on buildings. And, and so the board took that to eight mils. All of that mixed together netted a decrease of three mils.
That one we refinanced a little bit, too?
Yeah, there was some savings from the refinancing. It didn't really stretch them out. We got, we took advantage of lower rates and did crossover, so it was the same timeline. But the biggest one was just that we had a lot of debt come off right about then. It's nice to have it very steady now, not all those factors happening at one time.
Thank you. Now moving on to action consent. Does anyone have any questions about these? If not, motion?
I move to, I move to accept action and consent items 5.01 to 5.06, as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Shear, a second by Mr. Geary.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Okay, on to action, bids, contracts, agreements. Does anyone have any questions? There's quite a few there, 14, that they'd like to pull out at all.
I had just a question real quick on 607, just a replacement. Could somebody just talk real quick about how we, the process for replacement of playground equipment and how that works?
You may recall, I think we've had two separate occasions that we've been before the board where we had audits done of the playgrounds and then asked for funding approval in order to go through and do repairs. We've done that, but we continue to work on playgrounds. But at times, we find that they've deteriorated even within the year. That was a situation with the, with this particular playground. It's just started deteriorating even, and it was beyond repairing. And therefore, we decided that we need to get one now and not try to begin the year and not, and have this, no equipment there for the kids. But we're actually looking forward to more of a cycle on auditing playgrounds. So it's actually a requirement for our risk management to assess and, and do repairs, similar to a park system would.
Hey, John, can I ask you a question on 6.08? It might be Travis, I don't know. But are those units, I mean, it sounds like they're emergency, they were scheduled maybe for next summer. Is that something that, I mean, was it, are there other units elsewhere that are running fine and just happen to be these two schools that were affected? Or is there, we're not going back to those types of units or?
No, it was just that the units failed a little bit quicker than we anticipated.
Okay.
With the current bond issue, 2016 bond issue, we had a five-year plan for swapping out any units that have come past their, their age. We tried to work on them to extend that period of time before replacement, but these just came on board a little bit quicker than, than we anticipated.
Okay. So we don't have a bunch of these that potentially during the school year might?
No, we're constantly working on them, but these three just happen to be a little bit worse than even we could keep them updated even for getting to next summer. So we felt the need that we need to do that now, and we can do the swap out here as soon as we obtain the units.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions about 6.01 through 6.14? If not, did I get a motion?
Sure. I would move to approve 6.01 through 6.14, as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. McCune, second by Mr. Shear.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yeah.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Okay, and on to action items other. We have the Board of Education committees and- We have the Board of Education committees and school site council assignments, which Mr. Whitcliff sent out, I think, earlier this week. Budget development, and then our special meeting on the 22nd for the budget. Any questions on that? If not, can I get a motion?
I'd move to approve action other items 7.01 through 7.03, as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Geary, second by Mr. Shear.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter? Oh, sorry, she's not here. Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Okay, and on to future action items, and then topics for discussion, 9.01. Does anyone have any topics for discussion? I was just going to mention, Mr. Allison and Mr. Whitcliff and I had lunch with some people with the city regarding action item 6.01, not specifically that, but just our Public Safety Academy, and they couldn't say enough good things about the Public Safety Academy and how excited they were, and even talked about, you know, potentially hiring people, I think, next year from the academy, so just want to give a shout-out to the Public Safety Academy, it's exciting to see what they're doing, and the city is excited as well. Oh, and maybe you do this, but I was just going to mention, election on Tuesday, so I might be stealing your thunder, but election on Tuesday, if you live in Johnson County, you have an election, because the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees has a primary, so I would encourage you all to vote. If you don't know who the candidates are, ask somebody who does, and find out, because it's important for the school district and for the county. That's it.
I would echo the importance of voting, the relationship we have with Johnson County Community College is really critical to opportunities, not only for the Alatha School District, but for all the schools in Johnson County. And it's important that people become informed of the candidates and exercise the right to vote, because it does have consequences, both voting and sadly, when you look at the number of people that don't vote, it does have an impact, and will have an impact on our local schools. Few things in my comments that, busy time of year, as we ramp up for another school year. Yesterday, we spent the day with district administration, both school administration and support level, as we talked about our strategic plan and how we're going to move forward and prepare for achieving our goals for the class of 2032. So had a very productive day. Today, we had building principals along with a teacher leader from each of their schools that were getting a pressure around Mastery Connect, as they prepare to lead their buildings, and as our teachers are introduced to what I think is just going to be a powerful tool for the district and for our teachers, as they will be able to have good realtime data around students to make instructional decisions. So we're really looking forward to that. Tomorrow morning, we will be welcoming about 230-plus new staff members to the family here, always an exciting time of the year. We will be, it's just a week from yesterday away from the rest of our staff coming back, and 14 days away from our students arriving, so next couple of weeks are very busy, and as we prepare for those students arriving. Saturday, I want to say a special thank you to the Education Foundation, as well as so many of our community and business partners, as we will be hosting the back-to-school outreach for 2,000 backpacks, haircuts, you name it, on what a child would need to be ready for school, and our community outreach is phenomenal in being able to provide that, so that when every student walks through the doors that first day of school, they have what they need to be successful. And that is something that's unique. To this scale and scope is just unbelievable, how this community wraps its arms around our children to make sure that they're successful at school. And then lastly, a special thank you to the School Service Center and our custodians and others that have really worked all summer long to make sure that our buildings, that upgrades and maintenance and everything is ready for our teachers and students when they return. And, you know, it can be 100 degrees, and this summer, we've had a lot of rain, and they've still been able to get our buildings in tip-top shape and ready for everybody to return, so I want to thank them for all their hard work, and that concludes my comments for tonight.
All right. Looks like we have a couple executive sessions, could I get a motion for the first?
How much time do we need?
Yeah, how much time do we need for the first one, John?
Shores, how much time do you think? 10 minutes?
I would move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney to discuss legal issues for the body or agency pursuant, to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma, and that the board return to the regular board meeting at 7:05.
Second. Motion by Mr. McKeon, second by Ms. Schultz.
Did you say 7:05?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Whoever's talking, I already shut down, so is everyone going to like us?
Here it is, I heard it.
Oh, you got it?
Sure.
How much time do you have?
Oh, actually, we don't know, let me go check.
20 minutes?
I would say 15.
I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing salary, benefits, and related items of the bargaining unit pursuant, to the exception for employer-employee negotiations in our coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 7:35.
Second. Motion by Mr. Geary, second by Mr. Shear.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Yeah. Wait, do we have our motion?
I would move to approve 12.01, approve the negotiated agreement as proposed.
I'd be excited to second that.
Is there a third?
Motion by Mr. McKeon, second by Mr. Shear.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
All right, 13.01, we are adjourned.
Thanks. Nice job.
Thanks.
Good job.
Thanks.